Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the January 27 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. If you have pagers or cellphones or other devices that might ring buzz or otherwise alert us, would you please turn those off or silence them now? If you are not the applicant and you wish to discuss a case with us, there are sign-up sheets, they look like this, they're on the table right outside the chambers. If you'd complete one, we'd of course be happy to hear you. First order of business is to approve the January 13 minutes.
We have approval of minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion, action, cast your votes, and the minutes are approved. Next is continuance request, Russell.
We have three uncontested requests for continuance. It's item four, which is PUD 1426, request to continue until February the 10th. Item 21, which is SPUD 597, a request to continue to February the 10th. And then item 22, which is an ordinance, is to request to defer until February the 24th.
Did anyone come down today to talk to us about any of the items that were just read on our agenda, items four, 21, or 22?
Three uncontested continuances.
We have a motion and a second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Nick, you're not showing up. Thank you.
There are three new requests for continuance. Item one is PUD 1430, a request to continue until February the 10th. Item 13, SPUD 594, a request to continue until February the 10th. And item 15, which is SP 430, a request to continue until February the 10th.
Item 15, I've talked to some of the people who are here in protest, and at least one of whom has flown in from another city to talk to us today, so I at least want to give them an opportunity to hear, to be heard, even if we don't take action today. And the protesters have asked that we continue this to the second meeting in February since their spokesperson will be unavailable on the 10th of February.
So the continuance request is to the second meeting in February, but we're going to hear the out-of-town person today, potentially?
That would be what I would suggest.
And what is the purpose, why do we need to continue until?
Well, the applicant's request of continuance is my understanding. Is the applicant here? You can hear it, Nick. If that's the pleasure of the commission, we can go forward and hear it.
Well, I was just curious.
I don't know what the reason for the request is. It may be that there's protest.
I think we ought to do, I don't think, I have a bias toward hearing absentee applicant being present, generally. So, I mean, personally, so.
No, as do I. I think we all do.
Yeah, so I think we could continue it, but certainly taking into account the person that's come in from out of town or others wish to speak on that particular application. And we take it in order.
That would be my plan. We also have at least one person signed up on item one, which we're talking about continuing until February 10th.
If it's going to continue, I'll just come back at that time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here on any of the items that we just read, items one, 13, or 15, other than our discussion of item 15? In that case, I would take a motion to continue items one and 13 to February 10th and item 15 to February 24th. So move. We have a motion and a second to approve those continuances. Cast your votes. That's approved. Are there any other requests from the public today for continuances? If you would, sir, please give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Lance Mills. I'm with Cedar Creek Consulting at 7100 North Classen, Oklahoma City. We respectfully request a continuance to the February 10th meeting for the second thing on the docket, which is PUD 1428. My client this morning was talking to his attorney, who advised him that he needed to change the ownership entity applying for the PUD, so we're requesting a continuance for the next meeting. Additionally, on top of that, our environmental consultant, Clint Porter, his wife is about to have a baby, and he couldn't make it here today. We do have some environmental issues that we do need to talk about, so it would be beneficial if he was here, but those are the two reasons that we are asking the continuance.
Okay, we'll hear from the protester and anyone else of Mr. Grove's group that wish to address us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Eric Grove. I'm an attorney, I represent protestors in this case. The commission may recall that two weeks ago, we requested a continuance for a month in order to meet with applicant and see if we could resolve our differences. Applicant was willing to agree to two weeks, not four, and so we did continue it for two weeks. And during those two weeks, we've had two meetings with the applicant and his engineer, and we are unable to resolve the many, many issues involving this PUD. Therefore, we object to the continuance. We don't think that there's much more to be said. Now, if there's a missing witness, that's something else, I wasn't aware of that. We did not know until this morning that the applicant wanted to continue it. But there is one other stated reason for the continuance, and that is that the applicant wishes to change the ownership entity. The ownership entity is Route 66 Holdings LLC. That is the same entity with whom we negotiated a PUD back in 2002. My colleague, Mr. Box, represented Route 66 Holdings LLC in 2002. We negotiated a PUD and an agreement, contract. Contract was for the applicant to build a wall to buffer the PUD from the neighborhood. This applicant does not wish to honor that contract, does not wish to build the wall. So maybe the purpose in changing the ownership of the applicant is to escape the contractual obligation that currently exists that Mr. Box and I negotiated. I don't think that's a very good reason for a continuance. Thank you, we object.
I'd like to have the people who came down to this meeting in protest of this application to stand up, if you would, please. I think all the more reason to not continue it. This is an inconvenience to all of you. We've had this application before us, this time two weeks ago. I'm very well familiar with it. I have comments to make that I'm not going to make right now because it's not appropriate, but in my opinion, I think a continuance is not appropriate. You can all sit down, too. Thank you. Commissioners, other thoughts?
I'll move in here in order.
Second. Do you want to say something?
No, I was going, wondering of all those who stood up, how many would like to come back and how many would like to hear it today? I assume if you're here, you'd like to hear it? Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Well, actually, we don't have to take any action if we don't want to continue it because it's on the agenda in order right now. So, that's your final word, commissioners, we'll hear it in order. Any other requests from the public? We're ready, number two.
We can actually hear item two now. Item one has been continued until February the 10th, so we are on item two, which is PUD 1428, an application by Ken McGee to rezone 4300 North Morgan Road from PUD 813 to PUD 1428 in Ward 3.
Mr. Mills, you're up.
Again, my name is Lance Mills. I'm with Cedar Creek Consulting, and I'm at 7100 North Classen, Oklahoma City. I appreciate you guys' time and your patience, and we're glad to go ahead and present this and present the facts and the way things have laid out. Through the process, which started approximately seven months ago, we started looking at this property and really evaluating it. And during that process, we've had numerous meetings with adjacent homeowners, which I've really come to appreciate a lot of them. And we have, we've had numerous conversations with, with people on the phone via email. But during this process, there has been a lot of misinformation that has been generated through mass emailings and through postings on the internet that simply not only had a lot of misinformation, but sometimes information that wasn't entirely true. Through those meetings that we held with the homeowners association, adjacent property owners, we were able to eliminate some of those concerns that were created by some of these unwarranted, or these, this information that necessarily wasn't true, that was out there.
Well, Mr. Mills, let's stick with what is the correct information, if we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Currently, right now, we have PUD 813. That is what the property is zoned, it's located at the northeast corner of, northeast corner of Capatrick Turnpike and Highway 66, which is a four-lane highway. The current PUD was done in 2002. As you can see, this is, this exhibit here was from the original PUD. The site plan was approved with.
Mr. Mills, I'm going to ask you to come to the microphone and your associate to come closer to you so that you can make that presentation, but we get a clear record of what's being said. Thank you.
As you can see, the base zoning for PUD 813 is a commercial zoning. It's a high-intense zoning. As you can see, it's 60 acres of big box concrete and steel. It's about as high intense use and purpose as you could put out here. So as we looked at that, and as we evaluated, and we looked at the southwest sector plan, the first thing we did is we looked at the surrounding zonings. And surrounding zonings, we have an AA over here to the east, directly to the north an AA. Then our PUD, which reflecting now would be all orange on this graph, then across, you know, to the south, we have Highway 66, 300 foot of rideaway, and then we have Capatrick Turnpike immediately to the west. On the other side of Highway 66, we find that we have a PUD 29. And PUD 29 extends from here all the way over to the other side of the Turnpike. And when you go in to evaluate PUD 29, in and itself is a mixed-use PUD that was done in the 80s. And for its time, it was, it was rather progressive PUD statement. Somewhere along the way, the Turnpike was constructed, and this portion of PUD 29 was taken out, and it was rezoned to PUD 760. And as you can see from this graph, PUD 29, as it's stated, is a mixed-use, but we have an R4 component that exists within PUD 29, it's directly adjacent to the Stone Bridge. Stone Bridge is the R1 component of that, and then over here, what was rezoned, you have an R4 component there, and then you have a commercial component adjacent to the property on the west side. So when we looked at that, we thought mixed-use development is absolutely, it fits out here in what we're trying to, to accomplish. Third morning, looking at southwest sector plan, it's encouraged to put multifamily in between your commercial high-density and your less residential densities, such as the AA. So, so what we came up with was this development plan, which has evolved through those meetings, me with the staff, me with the community, and I think much of you, we've tried to tweak that thing and tried to resolve as many of the issues that we, that we can, to make this a very well-put-together PUD. Just walking through the PUD itself, over here, we have track one, which is the R4, the residential component. As you can see, we can also put in, you know, we have several different residential uses there, but right now, we're reflecting the R4 on this graph because that is the most likely that, that it's going to move forward. And as we move across, we have this commercial component, which we, we envision more of a neighborhood-type commercial, things that are going to serve the community that it resides in, such as drugstores, dry cleaners, places you can take your, your pets and get them groomed. Those are the kind of things that we envision here. That's, that's the way the PUD was set up. As we, as we move this way, we have the common area. And the common area not only creates a buffer between our residential and the commercial, but it also incorporates wetlands, it incorporates our, our detention ponds, it incorporates the protection zone within that wetlands, and the drainage channel that goes through the site. Over here, on track three, we envisioned mixed office. And the mixed office use is more like a garden office use, and that's, that's what is intended, and that's what we envision. However, we don't have a crystal ball, and it's very likely that because of the proximity to the signal, that a commercial component could say, hey, I like your site, but I want to go there. And the last thing we want to do is have to try to come back to you to ask for a commercial component. So that's why we have the commercial component in there, because it is highly likely that that could evolve into a commercial. Then over here, track five is just straight C3 commercial. It's the high-density that, that is currently over the entire 60 acres, facing Capatrick Turnpike, and it's, you know, it's restricted through the C3. During our, during our due diligence process, there was a couple of things that we needed to go through and really analyze, so that when we got here, we could stick to the facts and we could just, that way you guys don't have to pick through any gray areas, you'll know what the wetlands are, you know what the impacts are. And so that's what we want to bring for you today. So on the front end, first thing we did, the, right here, this green area reflects what's in the Wetlands National inventory map, if you went onto their website, that's what you would see. Based off of our experience, we know that this is entirely inaccurate most of the time. So the first thing we did is we said, Ken, we need to go out there, and we need to evaluate and determine where the wetlands are. And Ken said, okay, that's what we needed, because it's going to impact my site plan, I'm going to have to make the, you know, determination whether I want to mitigate those wetlands, or what I want to do. So we hired Clint, who's not here today. He went out and he evaluated what he thought was wetlands. This red area indicates what Clint said the wetlands are going to encompass. So from there, our client said, yes, let's protect the wetlands and let's move forward. So we sent this determination that Ken paid for to the Corps of Engineers. He came back with a jurisdictional determination letter that said, we agree with you. It is more than what we had shown. So we, now we feel like we've got a good handle on the wetlands. We develop our plan further out to stay away from the wetlands. The second component that, that we attacked was that the, pretty much the entire site is in a hundred-year floodplain. I'd say 95 percent of it.
Now, you mean just to the west there, or you mean the entire site?
Pretty much the entire site.
Okay.
It comes right across here, everything else is a hundred-year floodplain.
All right, thank you.
So in order for Ken to make, I mean, one of the things that we need to be able to tell you up here upfront today is whether or not we're going to have an impact, upgradient or downgradient, if we fill this floodplain in. So Ken allowed us to go ahead and move forward with flood study. So we went ahead and we completed a flood study, we turned it in to the city, and that flood study has been approved through the city staff. So, from that, we were able to give him numbers, and so now he's developing his site costs. We know what the site's going to look at, look like. We know that if we fill this floodplain in, we're not going to flood everybody out. The next component that we looked at, that Ken allowed us to go ahead and do, was to hire a traffic consultant. Traffic consultant is here today to address any concerns that you may have there. Ernie Peters from Little Rock, Arkansas, came out, he counted, he projected, and he gave the recommendations. He said, two signals, and we have mass improvements that we need to do if this is going to function properly, gentlemen. So we incorporated that into our cost, into our site plan, into our PUD. Another aspect that we had to, had to deal with, or had, had to try to circumvent and make sure that we weren't going to have a negative impact, was the water quality issue downgradient into the refuge and into the lake. So what we did is, and you can see in the staff's report, stormwater detention is not required in this area, and that is in the report. But these are not only to help the design of the stormwater, but they also help control the quality. And so written into the BNP is a requirement for structural, I mean, written into the PUD is a requirement for structural BNP's for, for this site, and everything that's coming off parking lots and impervious areas has to pass through one of those designed BNP's that help control water quality. The water, it's then discharged into the wetlands, and wetlands themselves help water quality. So we have this design measure and this design measure, not only addressing quality and quantity, but also we have this natural wetlands. And this wetlands is further taking out anything that escapes what we've built before it's discharged and before it gets on downstream. The next thing we did is, we went ahead and we developed a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Because as you said here, you say, okay, that's fine when it's built up, but what about when you're building it? How are you going to protect those wetlands? How are you going to do these water quality measures as you're constructing the site? So the next step we did is we developed a stormwater pollution prevention plan, a written one, and the design plans, we submitted to the state of Oklahoma, the Department of DEQ. We submitted those documents, and we have got approval, we have our NOI, because we have all the necessary design measures in place to protect those wetlands. When I, going through the staff report, there's three items that the staff makes recommendations on. One of them is signage, which we do have, and will need to probably further, have further discussions about today. The other two items as it relates to the traffic, and we are going to work with staff before the city council meeting to incorporate those comments. And there's, they relate to, make sure the PUD ties down and commits us to the deceleration lanes going into the driveways, as well as the improvements along Morgan Road, and what those are going to look like, and, and the timing of those improvements. So I'm sure you guys are going to have a lot of questions as we move forward. We're here to address those questions, but I thank you for your consideration.
Well, Mr. Mills, let me just start with one question, because I've heard it several times, and that is, the wall that the neighbors negotiated with this entity?
Yes.
Back in 2002 or '03, whenever that occurred? Sir?
Do you mind if I address that?
Sure, come on up. Give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Ken McGee. I'm at 1433 East Red River Terrace in Mustang, Oklahoma. And I'm the majority owner and applicant of this project. And the wall, as, as most of you know, is the biggest issue here as it relates to protests and concern for what we're trying to accomplish. And I wanted to explain a little bit of history as it relates to why we don't have the cost of the wall in our plan, and why we're asking to do this plan without the wall. Back when this property was first purchased, I was a small owner in the property. The LLC that purchased it was involved with some other individuals that are developers, and, and we were working with Walmart at the time. And Walmart was in another project that we had accomplished, and we had great anticipation that we were going to be successful again to bring Walmart out to this site. So we had planned a big power center development, and as you see on the old plan, it shows, you know, the big box full of Walmart. And Walmart would create a lot of traffic, a lot of noise, a lot of, it's a high-intensity commercial development. And, and so when we were working with the homeowners, not we, but my former partners are not involved with it anymore, but they had negotiated with Dennis Box's help, with Eric Grove's, to put this wall in place, but the wall at that point in time, in, in the minds of the ownership, was justified because of the high-intensity, high-commercial development being generated across from them with a big Walmart store. And so as I've started, I maintain, I purchased majority interest in this entity back in April of May of this year. And as I started looking and, and working with Lance on coming up with a different plan, I determined, based upon our marketing over the last several years, that a big commercial development is not feasible. There is not enough population, not enough people to justify a big commercial development at this corner. You've got Lake Overhose, which is to the southeast, and nothing's going to be built there from a home standpoint. And you've got flood zone problems, you know, where it's going to be difficult to, to develop property to the east and to the north. And so I had to come up with a plan that could help me develop the property now that I'm a majority owner of. And so as we looked at this, and then determined the wetlands, and determined all that was taking place that we're going to lose from a land standpoint, and determining the costs associated, I needed to come up with a plan that would accomplish two things. One, that, a plan that would generate more people to help me be able to develop the commercial. And I'd been marketing for a grocery store development, to try to get grocery stores attracted to this neighborhood-type shopping center that will face the Turnpike. And I have one group that expressed interest, but they said that we think it's a little bit too early, because we need to get more population out there. One way to help accomplish that was the apartments. Another aspect from the apartment standpoint is because of the cost associated with, with filling the land up to the floodplain level, I couldn't afford just to put residential homes in here. It's, the numbers don't work. And so you have to look at, okay, what can be prepared to generate enough revenue from an income standpoint to make the whole project make sense? And so apartments can afford to pay for more, because it's more density and more people. So it would accomplish two goals for me. One, to be able to generate more people, to hopefully attract them more commercial, and then two, to generate enough income to offset the costs to develop this properly. Well, so now, the purpose has changed. You know, in a letter that Eric sent to each one of you back on the, I guess, when he was asking for the continuance, he pointed out in that letter that the purpose for the wall was to buffer a highly intense commercial development. And that was the original intensive. And that was the original intensive, intentions of the original negotiations. And that wall was warranted with a Walmart across the street. But now, in this development, when you've got apartments that, that, you've got the office building of the apartments here on the front, so there's not even apartments here close to the road. The apartments are back, you know, over 300 feet off of Highway 66, probably closer to 400 feet. Well, now, they're back away from this, so now you don't have the lights, you don't have the traffic. The traffic studies show that the traffic counts are going to be 8,000 cars a day less for this type of development than the current zoning that's in place for a Walmart-type development. That's a significant amount of traffic that's less than what's currently allowed for. And so, so there's not going to be as much intense development across the street from the homeowners. And so, so in our negotiations over the last two weeks, I, I presented a proposal to them. I said, "Now, I understand that you wanted the wall, but as I explained to you, I don't think that the same purpose is there anymore. And so, the purpose has changed, what I'm trying to do, and so, but in the spirit of cooperation, what I'm willing to do is to, to spend $30,000 to build an eight-foot stockade fence along the back of their property." We, we priced with a fencing contractor the cost to remove their fence and to build an eight-foot fence, which is two feet higher than standard, and that was $30,000, and that's what I offered to do for them, and they rejected my, my request.
Thank you. Eric, before you start, let me ask a question.
Of me?
Of you.
Yes, sir.
Back when you negotiated this agreement to which you've referred, between, I guess, the homeowners whom you represented and the developer, I assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, your group probably withdrew their objection to the, the project with the agreement that there would be the wall.
That is correct. Oh, and by the way, Mr. Chairman, I don't know where Dennis went, but Dennis reminded me to mention to you that he's not representing the applicant and not reneging on any deals that he made with me back in '02, so. But yes, the consideration for that agreement was withdrawal of protest to PUD 813.
Okay, now, for you, Susan, as a matter of law, that's a private treaty, and not something that we're in a position to enforce, is that correct?
Unless it was in the PUD statement.
But it was in the PUD too, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, was it in the PUD? That's my question, that's what I'm trying to hear.
The agreement for the fence is in PUD 813 for a contribution to a maximum of $150,000, beginning basically at the power line and extending back east to the right-of-way of
That's right.
Morgan Road. If I, I described it incorrectly, as we were talking earlier, it goes from the power line back east to Morgan Road.
Does that answer my question?
That is right.
And I wanted to know that before you said.
It was in the PUD, the agreement was a sidebar to the PUD.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I recall that at the time also was, it was a, Mr. Groves or the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was an, an absolute agreement. It wasn't a contingent agreement that we'll, we'll build the wall if we put a Walmart in.
Right.
It was
We'll build the wall.
We'll build the, we'll give you $150,000 for the wall, as, as I recall, and not the, you know, contingent on Walmart going in or
Well, it is contingent upon development for the use. In other words, it doesn't have to go build the wall right now.
It doesn't have to be a Walmart, but my, my point is
Right, but when it develops for commercial use, they have to build it that time.
It, it wasn't just if Walmart comes.
No, you're right.
No, it was, what triggered the requirement to build the wall was the commercial development across the street.
Right.
Okay. And I've, the discussion about the wall is really important, I assume, to the protesters and to Mr. Groves. It's not important to me at all. This isn't part of what my concern is about this particular application. But, as you said, Nick, is a, is a side agreement unrelated to the PUD 813, unrelated to anything, that's a, that's a contract. And Susan, it's a matter of, I think it's a legal issue rather than a planning commission issue.
No, 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 I disagree with you there, Bob. I think it is both, because it was, which I think is Eric's point, he would agree with this, it was a requirement of the PUD.
That was the consideration.
It was a consideration for, a consideration for the withdrawal of the protest. However, that said, if the property develops today, under 813, the developer, it's incumbent upon, as a requirement of the PUD, which can't be enforced, the developer has to build the wall.
So, they're tied to get, I mean, in your opinion, they're tied.
They are, definitely, yes. Yeah, it's in the PUD statement.
Well, but, but, okay, but, but, so the wall, the, I mean, the intensity of the commercial development with a Walmart, right? What I have in front of me is commercial development of 27 and a half acres, plus substantial apartments built on the northwest corner. Significant density, significant traffic, the traffic, additional 17,000 trips a day on US 66. I, really, I see a big commercial development on the west side, on the south side, and intense apartments at the top, which to me is, you know, six of one, half a dozen the other.
No, I, I get your, I think I get your point. In other words, it's, and I think this is to Commissioner Geller's point, if they put a, if they put a strip center out there, they got to build the wall.
Yeah.
Right now, doesn't matter if it's intense, big, or otherwise, commercial use begets the wall.
But that's developed under 813 though, right?
Under 813, exactly. Not, it's not prepared, they don't want to, yeah.
You'd have to approve this to replace 813, James.
Yes, I understand. But this is approved, that, that has nothing to do with 813. 813 stands on its own as its existing PUD, and that's part of the PUD for 813.
813 would go away.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
To be sure that we're all clear, the wall was a requirement in the PUD, and nothing was really said about Walmart at the time. When Dennis and I negotiated this, we had a, in, I mean, if you go back and look at PUD 813, it was very carefully tailored to be a large commercial center. And what triggered the requirement for the wall in the PUD was the actual development of that commercial center. The written agreement that we entered into is a contract that this commission has no jurisdiction to enforce, and we're not asking the commission to enforce it. We're just asking the commission to take note that in the prior PUD, this same entity agreed to make, to build a wall if commercial development occurred across the street, which of course is what this proposes, we'll get into that in a little more detail. Interestingly enough, that was in 2002, and Dennis and I negotiated a construction cap for the wall. I was trying to get as much out of Dennis as I could, and we settled at $150,000, no more. That was in $2,002. I think the reality is that it would be difficult to build that kind of quality wall now for $150,000. In fact, my clients have gotten some estimates that are in excess of that amount. Now, if, if PUD 813 were to stay in force, we'd be stuck with $150,000 for whatever it would build. But what we have here is, and we'll get into it in more detail in a minute, a developer says, "I don't want to build the wall because conditions have changed." Well, they really haven't changed. But let me begin at the beginning, and we'll get into it. I don't want to rehash a lot of what I put in my letter brief to you, but I do want to recount that the statutes and the ordinances that we operate under have certain standards for PUDs. And a PUD that does not meet those standards should be denied. The ordinance standards, which of course are in greater detail and more explicit than the statute, were crafted by and are enforced regularly by this commission, and you're all familiar with them. This application fails to conform to those standards. That's the problem with it. It doesn't live up to the standards that all of us in this business live by, in any number of respects. Mr. Mills or Mr. McGee said, "Well, the wall is the biggest issue." It's an issue, but there are many, many, many other issues. In any event, we are guided by what the law requires for PUDs, and it's very specific in this city these days, and this commission helped craft that ordinance. There are two very fundamental, basic issues with this PUD. The first thing that this commission usually inquires about is, what is the degree of compatibility between the proposed land use and surrounding land uses? Well, we know that on the north, we have AA land, we know that to the east, we have AA land. This proposal would put the most intense residential district right next to the least intense residential district. Now, people think of AA, and they think of, of cows and horses. People can live on AA land. You can have a five-acre residential tract on AA land, and people do. So, you're essentially saying, "We're going to bump our four high-density apartments right up against land that allows five-acre residential tracts." That's incompatible. The same thing could be said of sea uses, which are but AA land, that's incompatible. Now, we resolve these incompatibility issues regularly at this commission by certain techniques that we have. One of them is buffering. We can buffer incompatibility sometimes, and mitigate the adverse effects of that incompatibility. And sometimes we do that by separation, ring belts. Sometimes we do it by structure, such as walls. Most often, we do it by stepping down the level of intensity. If you want to have something other than R1 in this district, maybe that would work, but you'd have to step it down. And maybe like around the outside, you put duplexes, that are R2, something like that. You can refine that, I'm not saying this can't absolutely work, it just can't absolutely work as it's presented. This is just too intense. They want three stories for some of these buildings, two stories for others, we don't know which. We don't know where they want to put them. So, right now, and there's no quarrel but that it's going to be R4, as the developer said, "I can't afford to do R1, the numbers don't work, I've got to do R4." We would know very little about what would go in that R4 district, except that they want three stories and some two stories. There are no design controls. There's no buffering between those apartments and the adjacent land. At least as things stand now. The second big issue is the floodplain. Now, the southwest sector plan that was mentioned by the applicant here, it does indeed control. And I was somewhat involved in the preparation of that plan, because I had clients at the time, and I know that some members of this commission were involved in the preparation of that plan, and it was an arduous effort. And there was input from all kinds of stakeholders into that plan. Well, it's done and it's settled. And one of the things it says is, "We discourage building in a floodplain." Now, we can't very well say to landowners, "You can't do anything with your land because it's in a floodplain," it'd be a taking. But what we can say is, that if you build in a floodplain, which we discourage, then you have to make accommodations for that reality. And, and why do we have that public policy in the first place? Well, we prefer the natural environment for one thing, but filling in floodplains raises drainage issues. Where's the water go once you fill in this land? And I haven't seen a drainage study, there's a flood study apparently, we haven't seen a copy of it, and so, I don't know what the city may or may not have approved with, with that flood study. But we do know there's going to be drainage issues here, after all. Everything, except what's in the wetlands in those two ponds, is going to be paved over. It's going to be nothing but pavement and rooftops, and it's all going to go into that stream. Now, does the stream have the capacity to carry that? We don't know. There's another reason I think we have a, a public policy that says, "Please don't build in floodplains." Because we get into the situation that we have here now, you have to fill it in. Well, the fill costs money, four feet of fill for this. Now, I, I want to thank Mr. McGee and Lance for their forthrightness in all of this, and the negotiations that we've had. They weren't fruitful, but they were straightforward with us, and they are being straightforward with you. And the reality is, you can't buy four feet of fill and do all the other things this PUD needs, on his budget. The thing's undercapitalized. I'm not saying that it can't be developed if you have the capital and the will to do it, but that's not present here. I mean, as, as Ken said, "I can't buy the fill and build your wall too." Well, my response to that is, "That's not my problem. You bought the land in the floodplain, you have to fill it in, we expect you to fulfill your obligations. You move the money around however you need to, but we want you to live up to what you promised in the past." There are other troublesome aspects of this, and the environment is one of them. Now, it's my mission here to protect Stonebridge from the adverse effects of development across the street. And at first, I thought, "Well, how concerned should I be with the environment when it's my mission to protect property values?" Well, maybe more than you might think. One of the reasons people live in Stonebridge and in this area is because of Lake Overholster and because of the Stinchcomb Wildlife Refuge, in which both public and private money have been invested. We have a stream that's going to run through there, and we know the runoff is going to go into that stream from both the east and the west. We know that, uh, there's going to be trash in that runoff. We certainly know there's going to be hydrocarbons and other pollutants in that runoff, it's going to go into the stream. Now, is there an engineering solution to that? Yes, of course, if you're willing to spend the money, if you have the money to spend. I did a project up in Edmunds some years ago with a Walmart, and we were concerned about hydrocarbons coming off the parking lot and going into a pretty pristine body of water. We got Walmart to agree to build certain kinds of underground pipes and cleaning systems so that when the water came off the parking lot, went down the hill into the lake, it was pretty, and then, of course, it was filtered too by the grasses going down, that it was pretty clean. Now, what are we hearing from the applicant on this? The applicant is saying that we will engage in best management practices to take care of the quantity of the water and the quality of the water. Now, I don't even know what that means, best management practices. I suppose I should, as an attorney in this field, but I don't. But I do know this, that if there's an array of them, we don't know which one he sought. There's no promise, no commitment to, when, when, when he talks about BMP structures, what he's really talking about is, a lot of the stuff that comes off the property is going to settle out in the two detention ponds. Sure will, and over years, it'll build up, and who's going to claim it? There's no commitment in this PUD as to who will be responsible for the detention ponds or the wetlands. Property owners, it says. Which ones? The commercial ones, the ones that own the office, Walgreens, the apartments, who? There's no plan whatsoever to provide for the quality or quantity of runoff that's going to go in that stream. There are practices available, engineering solutions, but we don't have any in this PUD, and that's the problem. We know also as a fact that the stream goes into the Stinchcomb Wildlife Refuge from Manalake Overholster. We know what's going to go in the stream, we know where the stream's going to go. We don't have a single commitment to do anything about it. And so, I can't for the life of me imagine why the city would ever sanction a situation where it knows to a certainty that pollution is going to increase into an already impaired body of water. It's just not the kind of thing that we do. Now, the, I want to get back to the wall for a minute, because the applicant says, "Well, things have changed." Well, not that much. The western third of the tract's going to be, and remember, it's commercial that triggers the obligation to build the wall. The west is all going to be commercial. And Track 3 was originally pitched as garden offices. You know, if you put the word "garden" in front of something, it always makes it sound better, you know? It doesn't matter what you're building, these are going to be garden homes, and well, garden homes, I want one of those. Garden offices, how pleasant. But if you look at the PUD, that tract is wide open. You could put all kinds of sea uses in that tract. You could put dog kennels there. You could put convenience stores. And today, in the presentation, the applicant says, "It's most likely," to quote him, "that that O-tract will go sea." So, there'll be sea across the street. Then, you go down to the hard corner there, and you're going to have, if they can get one, a drugstore, and then maybe a little center with local businesses on it, that's sea. So, you've got sea, sea, sea. Now, the apartments don't extinguish Now, the apartments don't extinguish the requirement to build the wall. Sea requires -- it triggers that requirement, and it's sea all the way across. And why do you need a wall, incidentally, some might ask? Why did we insist on it back in '02? Because of the impact this kind of thing has. What kind of impact? Well, for one, traffic. I know what's in the staff report, which characterizes the traffic study that applicant did. It says 17,000 more cars a day. Well, now, that's a lot of traffic. That's the kind of thing that high-intensity uses create. Additional traffic, the sound of traffic, the smell of traffic, and all of the things that have to be done to control traffic. The road, you know, is got a 55 mile an hour speed limit on it. Well, something's going to have to be done about that. You know, things are going to have to change out there, but no matter what you do in terms of deceleration lanes or traffic lights, there's an impact on the neighborhood to the south. And that's why we have to buffer it. Other things. Lighting. There's no commitment as to what the lighting's going to be. That's another example of how high-intensity uses intrude upon low-intensity uses. All these areas are going to have to be lit for safety and security reasons, if nothing else. There's no limitation on lighting, no baffles, no nothing. We don't know where the poles are going to go. We don't know how bright they're going to be, but I think you can count on the fact that it's going to be awfully well-lit, and there's nothing to protect the neighborhood to the south. Signage. No specific plan as to signage. We know that the two hotels, if he should be so fortunate as to get them, are going to want large signs to attract people from the Kilpatrick. We know that the same thing will be true with the fast-food franchises he wants to put on the southwest corner. The grocery store will want something. He's agreed to do one big sign at the 40 feet at the entrance to the development. And then, of course, the other businesses over toward Morgan Road are going to want signs. A lot of this can be done with monument signs. Maybe some of it needs bigger signs, but we have no idea where they're going to go, how big they're going to be, no limitations. In fact, that's characteristic of this PUD. It's wide open. Anything goes, if you read it carefully. The underlying base districts have some uses excluded, but they include just about everything. So this is an experiment, really. He's taken a flyer on this. He wants this broad range of flexibility that, to the extent, we really don't know what we're going to get. One other thing. One would expect to have some degree of design controls on the structures that would go on this PUD. Back in 2002, when Dennis and I worked on the commercial development, you know, my question to Dennis always was, "What's it going to look like? Is it going to be a pleasant place to be?" You know, after all, there are nice shopping centers in this world. I'll give you a few examples of my favorite. Utica Square in Tulsa, Country Club Plaza in Kansas City. Why are they so pleasant? Because they're nicely laid out. You don't have to walk too far to park. They have trees. They have cafes. They have restaurants. And they have a common architectural theme. Now, that's not asking too much. So when Dennis and I did this, I said, "Dennis, let's decide on a series of architectural themes, and your guy picks one when he's ready to build." So we did. So it could be colonial. It could be Tudor. It could be post-deco or whatever. But whichever one he picks has to be incorporated throughout the development. That's what brings about nice places to be. There are no such design controls in this development. There's not even any elevations for the apartments. The commission has no knowledge of what it's going to look like, what it's going to be done, who's going to be there, what kind of signs they need, how they're going to light it, all of that, totally up in the air. Now, finally, I'm not saying this property shouldn't be developed. It can be. It might even be developed to look something like this, but it has to be carefully planned. And you have to have commitments. You have to have a developer who says, "This is what I want to do. This is what I'm capable of doing," not one maybe after another. So we have to ask you to deny it until something better comes along. We have to ask you to deny it. Thank you.
We have two other people who were signed up in protest or in opposition, and I would ask that if you have something to add that Mr. Groves has not covered, we'd be happy to hear you. We'd like to hear something new. First is Linda Bear Bar. I may have mispronounced that. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Linda Bar. My address is 3725 North Eagle Lane in Bethany. I'm right on the edge of Lake Overholser. And I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and discuss this today, and I really thank you, Mr. Groves, for the presentation. It covered a lot of my concerns. The first one I want to say is, I do work downtown, and in my profession, I work with at-risk children in high-risk neighborhoods. And I haven't heard any discussion about the impact of an apartment complex on that area. I know that previously, just to the south, we've had a lot of crime issues. The 10th Street, the Friends of the 10th Street, have done a lot of work to improve that area. I'm not confident that this plan is going to ensure what type of housing will be in that apartment complex. It can, in the beginning, be very high-quality. It can have a lot of good maintenance, but I'm not confident that down the road, that maintenance will decline, and then, at that time, the apartment complexes attract a demographic that then make that area unsafe. I have a high interest in that. And I just bought my home there at the Overholser area, and I have a lot of concerns about where the entertainment will go. Where will people go for pleasure? The lake will be a place where they'll end up. So I also am interested in -- now, I sent this letter to everyone, but I did not see it in the file, so I want to go ahead and just hit a couple of things that weren't -- a question I have is around commercial development and what that generates for the city in terms of revenues versus an apartment complex and how that then will deplete resources for the city. I didn't see any studies about how police, utilities, fire, public schools, and how those things will be impacted by this development. And those actually will deplete resources where if it's continued to be zoned commercial, then those will create revenues and city sales tax and different things like that. I was asked the question about where do I shop for groceries? And yes, I do shop in Oklahoma City, but if even if a grocery store is there, where will all of these residents shop for other things? They're going to go to UConn or Bethany. And so having that high-intensity residential is not going to guarantee continued resources for the city. I've heard a lot of talk about the floodplains. I've heard a lot of talk about filling it in and the studies. I'm still not confident that my land, which sits, my property sits there right on the shore of the Overholser. When I bought the land in October, I was told FEMA was involved. I had to do special insurances with regard to floodplains. And I am not confident, just because we can get permits that say it's okay to build, does not mean that we're not going to increase flood risks down the road. And I'm very interested in no increased risk to my property, which is just there. In the presentation that Mr. McGee gave to the Stonebridge Estates, which I am not in that actual property limits there, he did mention that he would be willing to put a clause in his application of no Section 8 in those apartment complexes. I don't know how that can be enforced, but he did agree to do that, and I would like to mention that it is not in the application. Of course, Mr. Groves touched on the environmental, and just to reemphasize that the Stinchcomb Wildlife Refuge is just adjacent to this property. And one of the reasons I moved there was to enjoy kayaking and biking and hiking and the increase -- impact, that is the word I want to reinforce, is the impact that it will have on that. It is one of the last important wildlands left in Oklahoma City, and that kind of a development, it frightens me. I can't see any good reason for an apartment complex right there. I understand it's currently commercial, and I would like to ask you to keep it commercial and deny the application to zone it that would include high-density apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to mispronounce this, possibly. Again, your name and address, please, and new information.
Yes, my name is Bill Gronos, and my address is 3021 Northwest Wall Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73107. My interest in the Stinchcomb and the Overholser area is that I've been hiking and biking that area since 1993, and I can't believe how unbelievably pristine it is for being so close to a city. Let me start off by covering one point that nobody's mentioned. I think this should have never, ever been changed in the first part. Mr. Mills alluded to misinformation on the internet. Well, I got that information from the city website that showed on the land use plan that half of Mr. McGee's land was marked for environmental conservation. To double-check my facts, I went up to the Planning Commission just before this meeting, and they pulled up on their computer from the same thing I saw, and then they pulled this a hard copy out, and they go, "We were really surprised at the same thing," because now it shows the urban development all the way to the big pond in Stinchcomb, where before, at one time, it was all the conservation was marked all the way to Kirkpatrick. Then an area was shaved off right next, as best I could tell. These diagrams are so small. That's why I went to the Planning Commission, thought I'd get a bigger diagram. And they said they were surprised. They said somewhere along the line, "This got amended." But I went by the city's website that showed this was an environmental conservation area. You want to talk about a misuse? This would be better commercial because nobody's mentioned, that's public hunting lands? Not the farmers who are shooting a Canadian goose between Mr. McGee's land and the city is public hunting land, public hunting. I'm not a hunter. I'm not interested in that. There's hiking and biking, but I know commercial people aren't going to, people in Walmart probably aren't going to have kids that wander too far into there when all the hunting's going on. And believe me, when they're shooting, the shooting is intense. And are we going to lose that public hunting land as part of this development? Somebody's going to object to that. How many big cities have something like that right within the city limits? Mick Cornett got on CNN probably a year ago and talked about the quality of life in Oklahoma City, and the things that it's rated on are based on an area such as the Stinchcomb Wildlife Refuge. Unbelievably pristine for being in a city. The other point I want to make is about the Clean Water Act. I talked to the Army Corps of Engineers, and they said the biggest problem when they start filling the wetlands for the floodplains, I should say, is the fill material. They have to bring that in from foreign places, and he said the, all the stuff in that fill material will leach out. And Mr. Mills said there's a significant mixing of the water into the Stinchcomb wetlands area, which is not true. I've blocked that area. I've blocked those channels. The area from Mr. McGee's land comes right down along 39. It joins with the waters coming out of Stinchcomb right at the bridge, right in the Lake Overholser, which is our drinking water. So even if they test it now, let's just say when that fill material leaches out, that's a lot of fill material. It's going to have a lot of stuff in it. They're probably not going to want to haul it from too far away. God knows what it's going to -- what are the protections for our drinking water? I mean, this is a big unknown, but the loss of that land would be a tremendous loss to Oklahoma City. I mean, public hunting lands? This has got to be incompatible with a high-density residential district, and it's got to have an impact on the quality of life on the -- even if they keep the Stinchcomb. You see this diagram? They're showing the urban development. It looks like it goes right into Stinchcomb. This is unbelievable that we're going to lose that kind of an area forever, and at the same time, we're throwing the dice on the quality of our water. I think it would be better to leave it commercial. It should have never been changed to begin with. It was environmental -- this is wetlands. How many wetlands do we have that people can go and that are designated for the hiking around there that adjoin that? And sure, he -- private land? I'm a big believer in private land. When Mr. McGee bought that land, it was already wetlands. Nobody devalued his land by changing it into something and pulling something out. He bought wetlands, federally designated wetlands, and they're really wet. If you ever walk out there, even with this drought, you can still find water out there. But if you can undo what should have never been done, I think it should be left commercial. It seems like the less reveals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Hill? Mills, I'm sorry.
All right. We heard a lot of different information, so I want to just try to stick to the facts. The gentleman that just spoke, maybe he missed, but we are conserving all the wetlands on our side, and we are protecting from the fill material. And as far as a land use plan, it reflects this as an urban growth area. Addressing Mr. Groves' concerns about compatibility, as we kind of covered briefly before, Mr. Groves is indicating that, hey, you know, you're putting this, this high-density residential next to a low-density, and the southwest sector plan is quoted in the staff report clearly says it encourages to locate multifamily housing adjacent to commercial development to serve as a buffer between the lower-density residential and the commercial development. Right now, we have a high-end density commercial development in those areas. We think that this plan helps it, brings it more in compliance with. So I think our plan is more compatible than the plan that exists. The other thing that I want us not to lose focus on is that PUD 813 is out there. It exists. And in contrast to what we're proposing, this is a much, much, much better plan, and it meets today's needs. 813 doesn't. 813 is dated. It doesn't protect the environment. It didn't take any considerations for the things that are going on downstream. It doesn't take any consideration for the buffering and zoning. And I disagree. There's a little bit of a play of words, but our master development plan did need to reflect some of the stuff. So when he was saying, "We don't show, we don't show, or we don't have," it's in the design statement. And so there's certain things that we need to add to our development plan that he says we don't have. Additionally, there's a, there was a typo. He said it says "property owners." Well, we added the word "association" to the end of it. This document, as I stated, is a, it's a work in progress, and right now, we're real close, but we've still got things that we've got to work with staff through. Association needs to be added. The Property Owners Association is referenced in the streets. It's referenced when it talks about the gateway sign. It was the intent that the Property Owner Association take care of the common area. So those things have since been addressed. We've put the word "association" in the PUD statement. We have added some more detailed language about lighting. That lighting, that language says, "Light sources shall be concealed and shielded with luminaries with cutoffs and angles not exceeding 90 degrees to minimize any potential for the glare and unnecessary diffusion on adjacent property." So those are the kind of things that we are tweaking this plan to get. But the intent of this plan is that we don't have spillover lighting, that we don't create more of an impact, but we are actually lessening the impact than what PUD 18, PUD 813 allows currently. Everything from the traffic to the intense, intensity of use. We have, and again, kind of going back and forth, but the PUD, our PUD design statement clearly indicates, clearly indicates where screening and buffering is required. Those things have since been added to the master development plan, and they include, you know, the screening that is very well articulated within the PUD statement itself. We've got a 20-foot green space here. We require either the green space We require either the green space, a live screen, or the wall here. Here, we've got the same choice between a live screen, as noted in the design statement itself, back here and back here. So a lot of the things are things that we need to work and get this dressed up so that it shows everything. The other thing that we have since added is the delineation of the current floodplain. Those are the kind of things that bring this master development plan to match the design statement. Those things have been included and are in there right now. The last things that we've got to include are the two staff recommendations addressing the commitment to the, commitment to the improvement of Morgan Road and the commitment to the D cell lanes. You know, we count a lot on staff. Staffs are planners by trade, and if you look at staff's recommendations, I mean, they clearly state that we are in compliance with the city ordinances. So I urge you to don't lose sight of PUD 813, and consider PUD 1428 as an improvement to what's currently out there. This is our chance to undo something that's dated and old and step up and have this nice development that protects the environment, that indicates and spells out everything in front of you of the impacts associated with it.
Okay. Commissioners, Mike?
I think there's a few things that probably might be warranted for those who have not been in the area. Morgan Road, which is the eastern boundary of this PUD, is a nice wide, but gravel road.
Unimproved.
Unimproved gravel road that ends up dead-ending about approximately two miles to the north of 66, maybe a little bit more, into, I think, the river. Okay? So, and if you can't get access to the, there's one access across to the west at 50th Street, and there's no other access, if I'm remembering correctly, I believe that's right, and that's not improved. And any access back to, I'm just painting you the overall picture of what the land looks like back there. Any access back to the east then is prohibited on that side of the road by the Stinchcomb Wildlife Refuge, and the undevelopable land between this tract and Council is, I believe, is still your only major arterial access back, to get back to the north. The, and this has always been a concern for me, even it would be even with respect of it. When I first talked about this, is what are we going to do with all these people in these There's one access planned, at least in the map that we see right there, back out on to Morgan Road, out of the apartment tract, and then a signal light planned then at Morgan Road and Highway 66, which right, Morgan is the only place that crosses to go back east, and then there's one additional crossing back to the east, I believe is located down at the Kilpatrick exit. But I don't think there's any others along there. If I'm mistaken, I'm sure somebody will tell me. So I think all the traffic that comes out of this, comes out of this addition to go east has to come out, make a left, and go back to Council, back out on the 39. So I give you that as an overview of what the area. I will say, in my personal view, that the environmental protections potentially with respect of this PUD are greater than those as I look at 813 and what the potential development for 813 is, because as I look at 813, I think you could pretty much concrete the whole, the whole lot, except for maybe a little bit up to the north. Not speaking to the uses that are planned, I'm just speaking about putting concrete over the, what you see in green there is a big natural barrier of trees that separates those two tracks, and so that really kind of defines and divides the two tracks. Back to the east are horses and cattle. That's it. From 39th Street all the way back north, with the exception of many materials or some landfill operators, dirt sellers, fill sellers, that are back to the north and on the east side. And so a concern that I've always, that I've expressed to Ken and Lance is that which was raised by Eric, is that you have the least intense, and I've said this exact word, you have the least intense residential use now being potentially abutted by the most intense residential use. Additionally, the access back to Morgan Road under the current plan is to pave, I believe, just a little bit past the first building over there on the eastern side of the PUD. Now, I don't know why you'd pave much more past that right now for this particular PUD. I mean, I think probably as a city, I'd like for, I'd like for the paving to extend all the way to the end of the property line, just while it's being developed. I think that is rational there. You know, 813 is not the best. I've attended the meetings, I've talked to several of the homeowners, I've driven the land two or three different times, driven all the way out. I went through Stone Bridge yesterday with the president or one of the board members there and talked to them. I just don't know that that use is appropriate at that location at this time. And I think what'll happen is, frankly, I think we'll move to a fact that what we'll get now is apartments. And as I've thought about this over the months, I would really like to see this develop out here in some measure of commercial tract, and I think if I, if one of the themes that I hear from the residents in the area is, they'd like for it too. They'd like to have some commercial facilities to service the area, because there really is not much. But what you have is back to the west, and it's in Yukon, and you've still got to go pretty good ways to get to that, based on my driving of the area. But I think that the, you know, there's several bits of this particular plan, I mean, it's 315 uses, units, I think, that are planned with the apartment complex. There's 15, what you might have read in your, it's 15 units per acre with two-story on the outside, three-story on the inside. I don't, I don't think the three-story units will be particularly obtrusive to Stone Bridge other than those folks who are on the exterior of Stone Bridge, and who'd be able to see those rooftops, because those are 50 foot, those will be 50-foot rooftops, and I don't think that you'll be able to screen those enough that they won't be visible. And 50-foot rooftops, although I must remind everybody that as I looked at the design statement for PUD 813, it likewise calls for a maximum building height of 50 feet. So kind of like, well, you've got 50-foot apartments, or you've got 50-foot Walmart, or 50-foot Lowe's, or whatever. But the building heights are consistent with the planned apartment and the already existing PUD 813. You know, I think that, and Ken can probably, will address, that's a lot of, it seems to me, a significant number of homes, residences. 315 units tells me that you're going to have 400-plus cars to a unit, maybe. I mean, you know, maybe one, but you're going to have more than 315, and probably less than double in my math. And that's a lot of density of residential housing in that area, hard up, given its access. Frankly, I know the point's been made about the apartment complex that's on the south, the very south side of Stone Bridge. I don't see it ever developing in that way. Not because of the, not because nobody wants to, but I think realistically, just because the access there is so fraught with problems that doing it will require a bigger man than the property merits, quite frankly, a bigger developer than, it's too big a, too big a problem. The thing that concerns me about the phases of the development, we haven't had, heard a lot of discussion on that specific topic today, is as follows. It's been zoned commercial for nine years, since 2002, and nothing's happened. So the promise of rooftops beginning or inciting a wave of more commercial development at this point, I just don't know if the two fit. I don't know that they go hand in glove right now at this point. I don't know if we, I don't think it's a, if you build it, they will come type thing. If we build the apartments that we're going to get commercial. And so the interjecting of the apartment, the changing of that use in an attempt to spur that commercial development seems to me to be a little bit of a Pollyanna-type look at this point. And I'm really troubled. I mean, I think the developer, as Eric would say, I think these guys, they've tried hard, they've got a challenging piece of ground, they don't have good access back to the north. You know, I tell you what, if it wasn't where it is, you know, if this were your standard, you look at Morgan Road at any other point or juncture just about in the city other than this two-mile segment, you'd be going, well, that's where we ought to put commercial. Right? I mean, it's a main arterial road that runs all the way across north to south of Oklahoma City. But because of the challenges of this particular tract and it being unserviceable back to the, from north to south, I just don't know, I just don't know ultimately if that works particularly right there. So, I don't know. You know, I don't, I don't think as I get to the end that it works, at least in its current configuration. As Eric said, maybe there's some things that work that, you know, duplexes, maybe the commercial doesn't work, but I don't think that the promise of apartments gets us to where the area benefits significantly by the interjection of neighborhood commercial-type development.
Let me add to the dialogue, particularly in reference to PUD 813. In spite of the fact of good negotiations that existed between Mr. Groves and Mr. Box, the surprise was is that there was no consideration whatsoever to the preservation of the wetlands area. It was just going to be paved, and I'm really, really surprised about that, because the interest in preserving wetlands in the United States of America is huge. There's all manner of reasons to preserve that, and what you guys did, you were just going to pave the whole thing and say, you know, to act with the birds. But so, but that's what we've got. But I don't think that that's relevant, 813. 813 is what it is, we can't change that. But 813 probably is in a category of never going to be developed the way that it's put together. I mean, it's, so at some point in time, somebody like the developer here comes in with a proposal to change that, and I want to do these different things. I don't disagree with what Mr. Groves indicated about this can be developed commercially. I mean, you can develop this piece of property in a proper way. I do want to know how you're going to preserve and protect the wetlands, not just a, you know, a best management practice. I don't have a clue. This PUD was so vague to me that I couldn't get a handle on it, other than the things that you wanted to do, and that's the number of uses. How many did you count? 300? You know, I mean, and you want to do O2, but no, let's do C3. That's gas stations, convenience stores, drive-ins, et cetera. In other words, you've developed a PUD on a complete speculative basis that gives us very, very little to say this will work. I want to know the runoff. How are you going to deal with that? I want to know, what do you do, underground pipes? I don't, something. There's also materials that we've had from time to time on parking lots that are pervious. The rainwater goes in instead of going out. Those are environmentally sensitive issues that you haven't addressed with specificity here. I will never agree that you're going to have five 40-foot pole signs for project, I don't know how tall those are, 15, 12-foot monuments. I mean, you've got signs all over God's green earth on this thing. They're inappropriate for appearance corridors. That's Kirkpatrick. We want to have people that go along that to say, "Isn't that nice? You don't need pole signs going flashing, whatever they're doing." Absolutely not. But my objection is, and I can't approve this in the way that you've done it, I really do think that you need to go back to the drawing board, and if you want to do this, then you do it in a way that we know what's going to happen with this property. We know that you're sensitive to the wetlands, to the, this issue about fill that was brought up, about the, where you get the fill from, what kind of stuff comes off of it when you fill up this place, you know, for the floodplain. Very difficult property. I don't disagree with the development. I do tend to agree about the, where the residential portion is, the buffering of that and the phasing in, is that you've got a two- or three-story apart, 50-foot, you know, that's going on agricultural land. I really, it's fencing, lighting, but all the specificities of what we would want to have in a PUD is absent here. And really, landscaping, these are, I mean, US 66 along there, traffic, Morgan Road is a gravel road, and then you've got, what was it, James? How many? 32,000 trips anticipated along, you know, it's, it's too fuzzy. That's my opinion.
Well, Nick?
Mr. Chairman, we've heard a lot, and I won't belabor the point. I have the advantage or disadvantage being party to the first go-round on 813. And I'm, like I said, I don't know if that's an advantage or a disadvantage, but there's a couple of things that haven't been said. One, I'm not necessarily persuaded by the applicant's statement about the PUD to the south that it's a mixed-use PUD. Yes, the PUD provides for mixed uses. What's developed there has not developed out that way. It is a residential PUD. The PUD before us, forget the land use for a moment with the apartments, whether that's appropriate or not appropriate. Personally, I seriously question that. But the PUD itself that's before us, as Bob just pointed out, lacks an awful lot of design specifics, which even the applicant just said a minute ago, we need to, it needs to be dressed up. Well, I think it needs to be more than dressed up. I think it needs to go back to the drawing board and start fresh. And then the last thing that concerns me, and this doesn't necessarily go to the validity of the PUD itself, but the applicant's statement, and I'm not lobbying for or against this wall that's contracted and embedded in the other PUD, but if a PUD of this magnitude, economics hinge on $150,000, guys, there's some serious risk with this PUD. economics hinge on $150,000, guys, there's some serious risk with this PUD. This lacks all the specifics that we require, I'd move for denial.
Second. Any further discussion, Commissioner? Cast your votes. Ma'am, did you want to say?
Is there going to be any more public comment?
Well, we're about, have you got something to add that we've not heard?
Yes.
All right. On the other hand, are you for or against this?
I'm against it.
Well, we have a motion and a second to deny the application. Do you want to let us go ahead, or do you want to?
Well, I want to add something.
All right, go ahead. Lance, will you help with the microphone, please? Well, other Lance, I guess. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Dr. Karen Miles. My address is 7716 Northwest 6th Street. And I coordinate a cleanup of Lake Overholser and the Stinchcomb Wildlife Refuge every year. And the big problem I have is related to the wetlands. And when I read this over and I read through that, there is not greenscaping being done on here. There are ways that you can include greenscaping with the different BMPs. I saw things about low-impact design, but there were not examples. And this whole area here acts as a filter for our drinking water, because the thing that runs along Route 66 there, FEMA calls tributary number one to the North Canadian River, because that's what it is. And we use those wetlands as a filter of the water before it goes into Lake Overholser. And this is an area that provides a drinking water for a majority of Oklahoma City, because it goes from there up to Lake Hefner, or it goes into Overholser. And so, this area needs to be preserved where the wetland function is there. And I also didn't see anything about a water quality certification under the 404, that'd be part of the 404 permitting process. And I also didn't hear anything about, under the stormwater permit, they would have to have plans for how they would maintain all their BMPs and stuff, so you're not having runoff, because these are an impaired lake and impaired streams around there. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice?
I'm sorry, I just feel compelled to say a couple of things. It seems like to me, you know, there's sort of several different ways you could look at the application that's in front of us. And one is just sort of the appalled disbelief that there would be any kind of development on a site like this, that it's so close to the wetlands, and that there's a need to protect that to such a high degree. And the idea that there's public hunting out there and whether that could be compatible with almost any kind of development, that's something I think maybe we need to talk about and look at a little more closely. I guess I'm willing to take on faith that we've gotten this far, it must actually be slated for urban development, but I'm a little incredulous of that, quite honestly. But if it is slated for urban development, then I think we need to look at not only this application, but any other application that comes to us for what it is in and of itself. There is history, and we always do look at whether, you know, applications that come before us are affecting an upzoning or downzoning of what's already there. And so, there is some certainly merit to looking at the history of the zoning on the property, there's no question about that. And if there are agreements that are built into the prior PUD, then that becomes relevant as well. But I think although there are a lot of things that I might take issue with in terms of the specifics of this planned unit development, signage and density and landscaping and even layout, I think we have to keep in mind what stage and phase we're at here, and we're not looking at the design statement in terms of all of those things just yet. And there would be a lot of work to be done by somebody who was willing to roll up their sleeves and do it, to really finalize this PUD into something that I think that this planning commission would look at favorably. But I don't think we ought to send either side away with the impression, either for the homeowners, that there'll never be anything built over there and that they can continue to look across the street to the north at nothing at all, or that to the developer, that he's bought a piece of property he'll never be able to do anything with. I mean, if the property is developable, then I think we're going to have to look at the applications that come before us in terms of the actual nuts and bolts and pieces of what they are and what they're trying to accomplish, and whether that works, and whether it's a good idea or not, having said all that.
Well, I think too, further to Janice's point, it, just so everybody, for, we've had that conversation. We had that at the homeowners' meeting, we had that when we met with the neighbors. I too told the association that night, something's going to happen here. I've talked to Ken about it, Ken's been very clear about it. This apartment use is more economically feasible for him, he thinks they have a view that it's appropriate for the area, but if not, development will go on. That's what he's in the business to do. So, I don't think there's any illusions, to your point, Janice, I agree with you. I don't think there's any illusions, one, that Ken thinks his property's not developable, he's a smart guy, him and Lance will maybe come up with an alternative plan, or they'll begin the process of 813. Nor do I think that there's any thought by the residents of the area out there that it won't be developed, that it'll be pristine, because I think they're clear. And historically, they've expressed a desire for some form of commercial development, perhaps not 100% unified desire for commercial development, or the nature of that development, but they're clear, they understand it's coming.
Any further comment? We have a motion and a second for denial. Cast your votes, and it is denied. We'll wait a minute while everybody who is visiting clears out. We don't applaud, folks. Commissioners, while they're leaving the room, we'll take about 10 minutes.
Okay, we're back in session and we've advanced all the way to...
Item three.
Item number three.
Yeah, item three, which is SP 428, an application by Sean Ostvar for a special permit to operate an auto sales dealership in C-3 Community Commercial District of 4615 Northwest 39th Street, Ward one.
Give us your name and address for the record.
Sean Ostvar, 2841 Northwest 117.
Are you in agreement with all the TE's, the staff recommendations at the end of the staff report?
Yes.
With approval of the application?
Say it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item three. Cast your votes and let's check the lights. We have two minutes at the moment. Nick and James off?
Janice off.
Janice off? That's it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Good to go.
Thank you. You're approved.
Item four has been continued until February the 10th. Item five is C-6262, which is a final plat of May Crossing in Ward two.
Yes, my name is Larry Cates, 14-800 Forum Drive, Suite 200 Dallas, Texas. I'm representing Hunt Properties with a request of the final plat. We have read through the staff recommendations and have a couple of them we'd like to visit about.
Okay.
The first one is on the requirement for the 60-foot right-of-way on Brookline and 52nd Street. It's existing street as it is, it's 50-foot right-of-way. We'd like to request the variance to continue the 50 feet and not dedicate an additional five feet. And there is a, item number three, I think, or four, talks about the existing street and utility easement. That's as you go north on Brookline, that portion that jots out there. We'd like to continue, just dedicate 25 feet of right-of-way and continue to keep the other five just a street and utility easement. So those are the first two items. The last one is, I need to visit about is item seven concerning the traffic signal. We didn't come before the Traffic Commission in November about a traffic signal request at the intersection of 52nd Street Extension and May Avenue, and that was approved. However, it's continuing upon the Target store that's across May Avenue relocating that driveway. We are visiting back and forth with Target. I have initial agreement with them that they do want to move the driveway. However, it's all about budgeting internally with Target. We're supposed to know something in the next month whether or not they're on board to relocate it, and if that is the case, then the signal will go in. However, if Target does come back and says, "Look, we don't want to relocate the driveway," then we would not be able to get a signal at that intersection. So I want to make sure that's not a condition that we put a signal in because it may not be able to get it. So that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioners, any discussion? No one signed up? Hit your light if you would.
I'll move the variance to item number three.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance. TE number three, cast your votes, and that's approved. Janice, you didn't vote, apparently. There you go.
And I'll move approval of the application with the elimination of TE number seven.
And I have a question about that before we go further on the traffic signal on May Avenue and 52nd Street. At some point, Target's right across the street and there's a huge amount of traffic that comes in and out of Target, and you say it's conditioned upon that driveway into Target being compatible with 52nd Street? I mean, they'll...
That is correct.
Here's my dilemma, is that with what you guys are going to do across the street, with what, I mean, maybe not particularly this, this application here, but there's a hotel plan, maybe, restaurants, et cetera. In other words, another potentially high-volume traffic issue that, that in some way, rather than delete TE number, whatever it is with the traffic signal, it should stay in there if, I mean, with a contingency about Target's driveway being moved or something. I don't want, a traffic signal at some point is going to be needed somewhere when you do your development. And so some way, making this qualified, no requirement to do it now, but there is a requirement to do it at some point in time. I can see that there could be a really significant traffic issue of ingress egress onto your spot, ingress egress onto Target, that this is going to be a problem. And I don't know how to word it, but...
Is there a way?
Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. The issue is, the applicant wants the light. If conditions occur that would permit him to have the light, he's going to go put it in as fast as he possibly can. So we don't need to require him to put the light in. He's already applied to the Traffic Commission, asked for it and gotten it approved on the condition that...
That Target moves its driveway.
Across the street, because you don't want the offsetting, you don't want a light offsetting another important ingress and egress point like Target's.
But if you delete TE seven completely, even though you've made comments to traffic, we want a light.
It's already approved.
It's been through the commission.
It's been through the Traffic Commission and approved. We don't need to say anymore about it.
So is that an obligation for them to have a traffic signal?
It's not an obligation. He desperately wants it, and as he develops that site, he's going to want it even more. So he's only waiting for Target to agree to move a drive opposite 52nd Street so he can put a light in.
Bob, one of three things will happen here. One, Target's going to move their driveway, which I suspect they will because it's certainly to their benefit. I would think they'd jump on it quick. But assume they don't for a moment. Assume Target leaves its entrance down to the south. This applicant is now in a position of doing one of two things. He's in a position of putting in the signal anyway, and it's just going to work for his side of 52nd Street, or not putting one in. Yours is concerned that he's not going to put one in. He realizes, and he's already feeling the heat, if you will, that they're going to need one, even before they've started construction. The farther they go, I think the more profound they're going to find that need, and the reality is, I don't, I don't think that we need a requirement. I think they're going to do it anyway. I think they're going to finally have to do it. And for us to require it absent some traffic study, I think we're on kind of a slippery slope. I don't know what the basis of the staff had for the TE, but I suspect it was generated probably from discussion with the applicant. I'll ask that as a staff question.
Staff wasn't calling for a traffic signal here. It's the applicant that wants it.
That's my whole point. I don't think we have anything in our quiver that would require us to tell this applicant to have a light at 52nd Street.
I won't say this very loud, but the applicant at some point may even want to give Target a curb cut if they're not willing to do it, just to make this all work for him. So that's option number four.
I guess the question is whether it would be possible to modify the TE simply to reflect that the applicant will participate financially, I mean, that's what we're worried about here, in the installation of the light at such time as agreement can be gotten from Target to also participate.
We're not even worried about that. He's willing to pay for the whole light. All he wants Target to do is move the curb cut. And the city's not paying anything for the light, so that's not even an issue.
Mine wasn't a financial consideration. Mine was really traffic. I mean, you know, like, it doesn't work.
I think that'll take care of itself.
It'll take care of itself. We don't have to deal with it.
But back to what Commissioner Gales just said, three options. One is...
Four.
Well, I'll go with his, I'll go to his three.
Fourth is Target, he'll put in a curb cut for Target.
Oh, there's four.
We just need to leave it alone, Bob.
Even though, I just hate to, you know, but no, but even though, here's what I'm, here's Target, there's no traffic signal at all. Here's this development, it's a big deal. You know, you have, there's a lot of stuff that's going to go on in that corner. And without, and you've made, you know, defer putting a traffic signal in until the cows come home, and in the meantime, there's chaos coming in and out to two drives, et cetera. Am I wrong? Well, what basis, what basis do we have to require a traffic signal there? Probably absolutely none.
All right. End of discussion.
My motion is to approve deleting, deleting TE seven.
We have a motion and a second to remove...
To approve the application.
Removing TE seven.
Removing TE seven.
What now?
One more thing. The variance is tied to TE four, so we need to delete TE four.
Oh, okay.
And on TE eight, we want to say sidewalks should be provided along Northwest 52nd and Brookline, period, and take off all street frontages. The ordinance will require a sidewalk on May at the time of the building permit.
Okay. Okay, I am going to move approval of the application, deleting TE's four and seven, and modifying TE eight to read sidewalks should be pru, provided all along Northwest 52nd and Brookline, period.
And we want to know who wrote TE eight, but never mind. Okay, do we have a second for the motion? Okay, we have a motion to approve item five as conditioned. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item six is PUD 1427, application by Milestone, Oklahoma, to rezone 501 North Cemetery Road from PUD 1411 and PUD 1071 to PUD 1427, Ward three.
Good afternoon. Phil Hagan with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. Cindy's handing out a quick handout, a couple of photos of the development, and a letter of agreement with my client and the neighboring developer. Letter of agreement adds some additional architectural restrictions on the garden homes that have been incorporated in the PUD. As you can see from the photos, this is a very nice development. There's a brick wall along the eastern portion of this development, along 92, as well as along the boulevard, and I'd say three-fourths of the way between Settlers Ridge Edition, which is to the west, and our addition, which was built as a combined effort between the Settlers Ridge developers and my client. Little bit of a background on this piece of property. It was zoned originally as a part of PUD 1071 back, I think, in '05. This portion was designated as a garden home community, R1ZL underlying zoning. About a year ago, it was, the eastern portion of this was rezoned for R1ZL or R4, allowing for apartments or assisted living center. Our application today is to eliminate that zoning, go back to the R1ZL, and to add additional architectural restrictions on the PUD. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
What is a laminated composition shingle?
It's typical shingle that you see. It's not the three-tab, it's the built-up shingle that makes it look kind of almost like a wood shingle. It's on 90% of the houses you see out today. It matches the neighbors, that's straight out of their covenants and restrictions, so it'll match the neighboring developments' covenants and restrictions as they speak to shingles.
Any other discussion, Commissioners? No one signed up? Mr. Rose?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I submitted a letter brief to each of you on this case. I am representing the residents of Settlers Ridge. If you look at the diagram to the immediate west of the subject property, there's about 80 homeowners in there, and they build homes which are on larger lots and larger homes than what's contemplated for the subject property. They retained me to evaluate the situation, explain their rights to them, and then, once that was done, to object to any increase in density on the subject property. In the letter brief I submitted, I put a history of the subject property, and as it turns out, there was R1ZL zoning on this all along. But PUD 1071 compromised that and said, "Well, essentially, okay, we've got R1ZL zoning 4,000-square-foot lots, but we'll take 6,000-square-foot lots." That's what was promised. This application, in essence, seeks to reduce the 6,000-square-foot lots to 4,000-square-foot lots and increase the number of homes in there from 51 to 67. Now, when I talked to Phil on the phone the other day, he had a different number, but that's what I got from the documents, 51 to 67. It may not be correct, but it's a significant increase in the number of homes. Here's the problem the residents have. They bought into this PUD thinking they were going to get one thing, and so far, they've had one change and now another change. They may have been misinformed as to what they were buying into, but an interesting thing happened along the way. If you will look to the, sort of to the southwest corner of the subject property, to the area that's outlined, you'll see several lots that are not going to be, the plat as to them will not be vacated, they will not, that will not be replatted. Larger homes were built on those lots. There's three of them, but I think there's only two homes. This led residents to believe that the rest of this property was going to be developed as, as those two homes. So they thought they were going to get bigger homes throughout, and then they find out that they're not. The, there were covenants with this PUD when my clients bought into it, and the covenants provided one house per lot and had some restrictions that they thought were to their benefit, but a close examination of the covenants reveals that the legal description does not cover the subject property. So formally, what we're here to do is to object to an increase in density and ask you to deny it. But the larger issue is that more and more, the Commission seems to be seeing cases where one PUD is in place and a landowner comes along and wants to replace it with another PUD. This is the third go-round for this property. The problem with that practice is that people like my clients buy into the original PUD. Sometimes, they don't understand that PUDs are not covenants, that PUDs can be changed, they're ordinances, but they make significant financial commitments when they buy in. And sometimes, you know, the people that are marketing the property don't always give accurate information. But I would hate to see us fall into a situation where landowners can come in and constantly amend and reamend PUDs to the detriment of the people who depended on the first one when they made their investment in their home. And so that's basically what we have here. It's regrettable, but all that we can ask for is that the density is already too high, you know, between the larger homes and the smaller ones, all we can do is increase it, ask that it not be increased. Can I answer any questions for the Commission?
Mr. Rose, I sympathize with the history I'm... Mr. Groves, I sympathize with the history I'm hearing, and I understand what you're saying, but if I buy a piece of property with a structure on it, whether it's a home or a business, or however else I might want to use my property, and I'm adjacent to what is undeveloped land right now, what prevents the owner from the undeveloped land from coming in and applying for a rezoning? I'm not sure, I mean, absent a representation that we may not be privy to, I mean, I could have bought a home with a lovely field out beyond my backyard, and the home builder told me that that's a wildlife refuge and will never be developed, and then somebody comes in, zones it, and builds.
Nothing prevents that, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm not sure what we can do to prevent, is my...
Well, but there's, but the situation, the hypothetical situation you just posed is distinguishable from this case. In this case, all this was part of 1071. Situation you're posing is you buy a piece of land, somebody's, it's undeveloped, another piece of land next to it's undeveloped, and Phil comes in and wants to rezonate. Of course, there's nothing anybody can do about that. But what if both are part of the same PUD? And what if you buy in reliance on what you think the rest of the PUD is going to look like, but market conditions change, people come in and change the zoning? I think the commission will be seeing more of these in the future. And there's nothing illegal about it, there's nothing wrong with someone coming in and saying, "I want to change the zoning because market conditions have changed," but...
Well, that's what you just protested in the earlier PUD.
But, 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 but there are some equities here, and I know the commission has a sense of equity. And one of the inequitable things that can happen here is that people who have already invested on what they think the PUD is going to look like, get a surprise somewhere down the road. And that's what's happened here. They thought the density would be one thing, now it's going to be something else.
Eric, let me, let me be clear. This land is in a, in a PUD that provides for R1ZL zoning now...
Yes.
But requires a minimum 6,000 square foot lot.
Yes.
Your clients were not even aware of that provision, they just thought it was big lots.
Well...
And now, the applicant is coming along and asking to, to basically reduce the R1ZL requirement with 6,000 down to four, which is the base R1ZL.
Yes, that's what we object to. My clients, I have to admit, had constructive notice of the 6,000 square foot limitation in PUD 1071. I suppose they also had constructive notice of the 4,000 square foot minimum in R1ZL. But this commission has discretion. This, this commission has the right to say, 6,000 square feet is all that we're willing to do. If we reduce it to 4,000 square feet, we just exacerbate the incompatibility in lot sizes that already exist.
Mr. Fairman?
Yes, Janice.
You know, I'm very sympathetic to the argument that Mr. Groves is making, and, you know, I can't count the number of times that we've all sat up here and been confronted with people who were between a rock and a hard place, and we wished there was something that we could do to remedy their situation for them. But in reality, I don't see that the application in front of us today is, first of all, I don't think that we have the discretion to say we're going to turn this down because we think it's not fair to the people who've already bought property. I don't think that's one of the list of reasons that we can give for the things that we do up here. And so, in the end, I don't think what we can do today is any different than what we do on any other given day or in any other application, which is to look at the application in front of us, see if we think that it is, has a merit or not, whether it's a good land use practice or not, and vote on that.
Well, my comment, I mean, I, when I got your letter and, and the philosophical argument about when you have a PUD that says X, and then the developer comes in and does Y, really caused me to pause and say, in fairness, we should consider those things kind of on a negative basis toward the developer, but in this case, it was R1ZL. It was, that's what it was. I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure that this is a fairness issue at all. It was, and it still is, R1ZL. And as a matter of fact, as Buck pointed out, the thing was zone four, assisted living, R4. Well, that's not what you want. It seems to me that when you come around again, and you have rather than 6,000 square foot lots, you have 4,000, you're dealing with not the issue that you're focusing on, that I would focus on, but you're dealing with a thing that already was, except it's just a little bit smaller lots. And I can't see any reason to oppose this application, so I move approval.
We have a motion in second to approve item six. Cast your votes. It is approved.
Item seven is PV 076, an application by Milestone Oklahoma.
Again, Phil Hagan with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. We are agreement with staff's findings and ask for your approval on this item.
Same item, it's the replating, commissioners?
Move approval.
Second. Motion in second to approve item seven. Cast your votes. It's approved.
And item eight is C 6253, which is the final plat of the Springs and Settlers Ridge.
Once again, Phil Hagan with Crafton Toll. Once again, we're in agreement with staff's findings and TEs, and ask for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you.
Item nine is PUD 1431, application by DeLeese Brothers to rezone 10401 West Reno from I-2, PUD 1431.
Good afternoon, Michael Hall with DeLeese Brothers, here on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Hall, are you now looking at essentially the, what I would look at as the south half of the site as your application, as opposed to what is previously outlined?
That's correct. The entire property is close to 160 acres, and we're proposing the PUD to occupy the south 110 acres.
Okay, thank you.
And is this the structure mounted sign you're talking about? It's on the, it's on the building. Is that right?
That is, that is our midtown plant that, in appearance, would be similar to the one we propose on this site.
On whatever it is you have, so there's a sign on it, just like there'd be a sign on a building?
Yes, sir. It would be on the, on the side of our plant structure.
Not a pole sign, I mean, none of those...
That's correct.
Didn't we have a question about the sidewalk on Reno? You're putting a sidewalk on Reno, right?
We can, we can agree to that if needed.
Be good.
For clarification, this is I-2, we could build it to the I-2 dimensions that would be required, or whatever the commission would request.
Sounds good. Is that right?
Is there an I-2 sidewalk requirement?
Same standard, same street sidewalk.
Okay, that'll be fine.
So we'll get a sidewalk along Reno as an amendment to item nine?
Right.
No one signed up?
Move approval.
Subject to the amendment to the TE with respect to the south half of the property and then the sidewalk that we've discussed on Reno.
Yeah, the south part of the property is not exactly...
Down 110 acres.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item nine as conditioned. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you.
Item 10 is SPUD 596, an application by Bob Gage, care of GBT Realty, to rezonate 3800 South Portland from C-3 and AE-2 districts to SPUD 596 in Ward three.
Is the applicant present? Not seeing the applicant, I'll move this to the heel of the docket. Go to item 11.
Item, item 11 is CE 803, an application by Manal Hotels to close a portion of a platted water line easement.
I'm Bob Luder, 9100 Southwest 22nd Street, Oklahoma City, 73128. The need for this vacation is that due to our healthier economy, Lot 1 currently has a filled field by Marriott sitting on it. Lot 3 has a forthcoming Marriott product called Town Place, and we added some rooms to the building, added it a little longer, and the current water line that we put in two years ago, when we were developing Lot 1 and 3, is now in the way with a hydrant. So we're going to dig it up and move it back to the south a little bit, with y'all's permission.
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion in second to approve item 11. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you for your time.
Item 12 is PUD 1429, application by Tony's Tree Plantation to rezonate 3801 South Post Road from I-1 and I-2 to PUD 1429, Ward 4.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Dennis Fox. Tony and I are here, and this is an application, Mr. Chairman, do you, are there any protests you have on this?
Let's see.
I knew of none, as of this morning.
Number 12, no.
Okay. This is an application where it's a, it's an intriguing site in that at the present time, if you're on I-40, you cannot get off on Post Road. We anticipate and have been told that in the future, Douglas will probably be closed and Post Road will probably be open. My client plans on spending in excess of $6 million on this property, and you have seen a site plan, which the staff has okayed as a site plan which would go along with the nursery and other facilities. This will be a destination site, and obviously, we think people will find us now, but in the future, we think they'll, it'll be easier to find us when Post Road opens. Mr. Chairman, the reason I asked if there's any protest, I thought, based on the time and straits that you all have dealt with, I would go through the TEs and, and I don't think the staff has an issue with the nursery facilities and the site plan as it exists. The staff has asked that this be a single-use PUD, and the other uses that we've provided for not be allowed. We think that an alternative would be that if the other uses, and we've only listed, I think, 12, if those other uses are developed on this property, we would agree that we would have to come back and do a site plan, and that this commission would be able to look at and determine the building, what it looked like, parking, landscaping, all those considerations.
Signage?
Signage, absolutely. Now, the packet that I've handed out, we are in agreement with in regard to what my client intends on doing on the property. As you look at those signs, the sign on Post Road is 12 by 8 and is 96 square feet. The sign on I-40 frontage is 20 by 10, 200 square feet, and is 20 feet tall. The exhibit that shows driving both, both east and west gives you an example of the bridge, which is 16 feet and almost 17 feet, 16 and a half feet tall, and so there's some limitations in regard to visibility, in regard to the site. It's heavily wooded at the present time. The last picture gives you a good indication of the site and what, what's around it. The letters that you see on the roof are 24 inches, and the wall sign is 30 square feet. So that, that's what we would propose for the only signage that would be allowed on this site, developed as a nursery. If we came back for the other uses that were provided, then this commission would have absolute power to limit us to whatever signage you thought was appropriate at that time. We think this would be a successful venture, and so we don't anticipate other, other primary uses coming into play. My client's already obtained financing and is proceeding forward, so we would like to modify TE1 to that effect.
Dennis?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but before you move off signage, on this diagram that you have, are, do these, where it says billboard, billboard, do those exist already?
They exist.
Pushpin, are they already there?
They're, and have been there for years.
Okay.
And there are how many, Dennis?
Three.
Three.
And what my client would be agreeable to do is to make sure that two of them are removed, and the only billboard that would remain would be the one on the very west portion of the property, that little edge.
Down in the small point of the triangle there?
Yes, sir.
Now, is that why you've asked for the non-accessory sign use?
Yes.
Okay.
Just because they, they exist now.
They exist already.
I didn't want to create a non-conforming use.
All right.
Okay.
Dennis, you said something to me earlier, what are the terms of the leases of those three signs, because you're really talking about taking two out as the lease's term, run term, is that correct?
It's my understanding that two of the billboards, the terms have run, and the...
Well, they have run.
Yeah, and the third one, I'm not clear on. Tony's Brothers working on that, and so we're, I'm trying to protect them.
So we'll remove two and leave one, is your proposal?
Yes.
But that should be specific.
Why, that'll become a TE. We'll have to make that a TE.
That there's only one allowed, rather than, what you want is non-accessory signs, that's, you know, how many can you put on there? Just the one existing, but I would like to also make the further qualification that when that one existing, I don't know how long these leases expire, whatever they are, but, but when it's no longer necessary, I want it gone too. And the interesting thing would be, let's define what's necessary. We think necessary, I mean, if you're talking 100 years, we'd agree with that, but anything less, we think would be inappropriate. I mean, we're taking two out, you've got to give us some credit for that.
Let me just say that anything on that corner will be an improvement, period.
Thank you.
One, one thing, Dennis, what's the square footage of the building?
The... 5,000 square feet.
Does that include the shed?
Shed too.
Just the building, so the shed would be additional?
How big is it? The covered area is what you think, Dan?
Introduce yourself and...
Tony Masato, 12425 Steve Drive, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. The retail building is 5,000 square feet, and then the shed on each side of it is additional.
Okay.
Just actual building.
Ted, we're talking about the covered porch kind of thing?
Right, like a covered porch. Yes, that's what I'm, I mean...
You're going to use a stone, a stone lanes coat? And then what, what material is going to be above that stone?
Wood, yes.
Wood, okay. Cedar or something like that?
Cedar.
I guess the question is, are we going to get what we're looking at when you build it?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we would propose that the packet that I've given you, we would agree to in regard to the building and the nursery, and we will include that within the PUD.
All right, that's, that's good, that's...
Now, if one of the, if, if at some date in the future, one of the other primary uses comes in, they'll have to come in with a site plan, at that point, we would say they would have to comply with the 70%. Obviously, the building you're looking at doesn't comply with 70%, but we're okay with that.
I thought we were, well, maybe we can't do this, but I thought we were looking at this use, or in, if this use wasn't, didn't become the use, then the alternative among the other dozen or so would be permitted. I mean, this nine acres will be a nursery.
That is correct.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you, you, yeah. Are we talking about the same thing?
Let me, let me make sure we are. The staff and their TEs has asked that this be one use allowed...
Right.
And all the other uses that are shown, which are only approximately 12, would, would have to be accessory uses. And what I'm saying is, we're agreeing to put the nursery in, the site plan you see, that's what we're going to put in there. If in the future, some... If in the future, something would happen, somebody would have the right to go through those 12 uses, come back before this commission, meet the 70% requirement, submit a site plan.
Okay, I'm with you.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think Tony has a, some kind of a medicine business also, animal medicine or something in Midwest City. Is that, is that not correct? So that could be moved out there at one time or another.
Yes, I own pet met supply in Midwest City.
Okay.
I have no desire to move it out there.
But that could be a possibility.
Well, I'm, I'm a bit confused about how this works. It seems to me that what the staff recommended, you do essentially a single-use facility out there that you're gonna put the tree farm, et cetera, in there. What's the difference between deleting those uses and then if you want to do something else, come back and say, "I wanna do X" with all the requirements of, of the brick veneer, of signage, et cetera, that you will come in with another application, rather than legislate it in?
Because...
Why do that? I'm confused.
It's a good question, but if I come back in, in five years and I ask for one of the uses that are in here, and you all are gonna say, "Wait a minute, you negotiated for a single-use PUD and now you're modifying it, and we had an agreement." I mean, I listened to Eric Groves talk about agreements that were made 10 years ago, and all I'm saying is, this site is on I-40 and Post Road, and the use we're talking about is a site plan that is gonna be developed. If however, in the future, development occurs, we think the limited number of uses that I've put in to the PUD are appropriate, the protection that the planning commission gets is we agree to meet the 70% requirement, that you all determine what signage is appropriate, and we have to come back for an approval of a site plan.
If, as long as you can do those conditions.
If they are not, or if that new use is not an accessory use.
Correct. If it's a primary use.
That's the key. That's the, that's the key to this deal, and, and so there's nothing wrong with the way it is.
The exception to that would be, of the uses that are listed, is the excess, non-accessory sign. There's only gonna be one of those, and it's the one that's existing on the west end.
With regard to TE 2, we are fine. TE 3, on building materials, we've talked about it. If any of the other primary uses in the future are developed, we'll meet the 70% requirement. Otherwise, we're gonna build in accordance with the plans that we showed you, and that'll be incorporated in the PUD. We're okay with TE 4. With regard to TE 5, we think the plans that you all have, we would like that as our sign package. TE 6, with regard to the, let me make sure, with the staff on their language.
Do you need an electronic message board, Dennis?
No, we do not.
I'd like to leave that language in then, or remove it, excuse me.
Okay. With regard to 6, what I've, what I have committed to will be an addition that the staff didn't contemplate, because they were just contemplating the single-use PUD. So, yeah, the specific plan can be eliminated for the nursery, but if we come back with another primary use, we have to come back before this commission, and we agree to that. 7 is okay, and 8 is okay.
And then we want an additional one for removal of that, those two signs.
Two signs, right.
Okay. So I'm, I'll make a motion for TE 9 to remove the, the two additional billboards.
Go ahead, James.
Dennis, since we've, we've approved that the building will be developed according to the delineations here on this drawing.
Yeah.
But the only thing with that is, what I would like you to give with staff and try to come up with a percentage, because this is just a drawing. We don't know how high this masonry is, or we don't know, you know, let's describe that as wood and so much masonry. Try to put it in the same percentages that's outlined for 70%. This may be 50% in the wood, but let's call it out, because we don't have anything to say this is wood or this is brick and how much we're using.
Between now and council, I will go back and take that exact picture, and we'll come up with the percentage.
Yeah, and call out the materials. This is wood.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have to amend TE 6, or add a TE that says if a new primary use is proposed, we'll comply with the building materials description.
70% requirement, that's standard, will come to you for a site plan, and we will, whatever signage is appropriate, will be determined by you at that time.
Okay.
You got that down?
Okay.
So move.
You can't do that, you're gonna, I'm not gonna let you off that easy. You gotta recite it.
I don't even know what you said. I think we've got, did we vote on TE 9?
Well, you can make a motion that would...
You approve.
And modify TE 5 to reflect the signs represented by Dennis in his illustration. They will build what they've described, and the dimensions he described. Will delete any language about allowing electronic messages, message boards.
Okay, on item 5.
On item 5. Then item 6, in the event a new primary use is proposed, the, follow the building materials outlined in the, in the PUD, and a site plan will be required.
Okay.
And then add TE number 9 to remove two of the three billboards.
Okay.
We get anything, we get anything there, Dennis?
Rather than simply eliminate the sign from the message board, I would want to say perfectly that...
No, no electronic message boards, okay. That's fine.
Okay.
All right, so that's...
That's the motion.
That's your motion? Do we have a second?
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 12 as conditioned. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 13 has been continued until February the 10th. Item 14 is C-6263, the final plat of Asheville Phase 2, Ward 4.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering, the President of the Application on the side of him. I have read through the TEs and do agree, and am willing to present the exhibit. There was asking for an exhibit on the hiking trails, which is straight out of the PUD, as approved, but if you'd like me to pass it around. And I do have a picture sent to me by the client showing the proposed fence, if anyone would like to see that.
You know, I have to say that this was a, the initial rezoning of this piece of property was kinda hairy, but I have not got a complaint on what's been developed so far.
Thank you.
And we had a, we've had some really, really good rains since y'all have been, built those detention ponds.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I think you've done a good job.
Thank you very much.
You know, we've got, I don't know, 10 houses, 12 houses built out there now, and I think some's already sold.
Yes, they are.
And they had a big open house about three, four, or five weeks ago, and I think they're gonna have another one, invite the commission and council and so on and so forth out. But I think they've really done a good job out there. They've done what they said they was gonna do, and I'm really pleased with it. Now, I've watched it. I mean, I went by after rains, I went by, you know, kinda see what was going on out there, and they've done a good job.
Yeah, I'll second that with a comment on the installation of residential sprinkler systems. Congratulations on that, too. That's a great, great feature that you've got.
Thank you.
So I've seconded.
Well, we have a variance first to TE number 3. Dwight, do we know what installing those sprinkler systems has cost, a square foot or...
I, I do not, but I'd be more than happy to get that information for you and get it to you.
Yeah, it's a point of information. We'd love to know that at some point, when you get the chance to just tell us in passing.
Be my pleasure.
You don't go ahead and jump into the variance?
Yeah, I'll move the variance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE 3. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
I'll move the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you, Dwight.
Thank you very much.
Item 15 has, has been continued, but we wanted to have that up for discussion. That's SP 430, which is an application for a special permit for the Goodwill Donation Center in downtown.
The gentleman from Omaha had to leave. He didn't realize how long this meeting was gonna be, so they agreed to a continuance to the 27th, and he'll come back.
Okay.
So we now need a motion to...
We're more in depth.
Did we continue this earlier, or do we need to do it now?
We did.
Okay, it's continued already, good. All right. Moving right along then to item 16.
Item 16, that is SPUD 598, which is an application by NADONG to rezone 3304 to O-8, Northwest 23rd Street, from our one single family in the Linwood Place Urban Conservation District. SPUD 598, Ward 6.
Yes, I'm Jeff Beardsley, representing NADONG on the dental clinic. We've submitted two building site locations, one with the building at the rear of the property with parking more in the front, another one with parking in rear as well. We have a preference of the one with the building at the rear of the property due to patients and, and the staff entering and exiting the building. He feels like it's a safety issue. He currently is on 23rd Street, has parking in the rear, and would prefer to have his parking in front if the commission would approve.
That gives you an offset from everything else that's along that immediate corridor, though, does it not? I mean, we put your building...
It does. Most of the homes currently along there are more along the building line that we show. But again, there are some buildings and some other commercial properties that are at the rear.
I talked with Jeff about this, and I said that, you know, the debate is, if your backyard was, you know, you're on 22nd Street and your backyard backs up on this, would your preference be that you have cars parked by the fence in your backyard, or would you like no cars being parked back there and just this space? I think that I wouldn't want cars parked back there with the exhaust fumes and the noise and the starting up cars and people moving around back behind my fence. I think that that'd be my preference, and so the parking in the front, I think that I've decided that I agree with you guys, but I, but I'm curious about what, what you, I mean, you know, where would you like to have the building situated if that was your backyard?
You know, this is one of the kind of troublesome aspects of our residential property conversion policies.
Yeah.
We, we actually recommend that the park be taken to the back or the man out in front, and, and our kind of new urban design outlook of having the building closer to the street. And I have to say that, you know, if our residential property owner that backed up to this thing, I would much rather be looking at, you know, a little bit of green belt and a rooftop.
A greenbelt fence.
Than cars.
Well, you're gonna look at a fence in any case, because you have to, have to separate the use.
Absolutely, but I mean, you know, rather than have it, for one thing, if there's cars back there, then there's more heightened need, I think, for lighting and so forth, so I think there's a lot more spillover if the parking's in the rear, so.
That was really what my conclusion was, you know, projected that I'd be, you know, that's my backyard, and what would I want back there? I think that I like the site plan where you have parking in the front, but also what I recommended was significant landscaping in the front, wherever you can put it. And one of the places that I think that ought to be explored is whether or not on 23rd Street that it's appropriate for street trees. And, and I, and we do have major inroads on creating street tree landscaping, and you would be among the first on 23rd Street to have this, but why not? You know, it makes your property prettier. So I would explore the landscaping between the sidewalk and the curb on 23rd Street to plant a couple of trees in there.
The location between the sidewalk and the current curb is very minimal.
How, how, how big?
Probably about five, six feet.
Five feet, that's enough.
So, I mean, we aren't opposed to trees at that location, I'm just pointing that out.
Well, I know, but, but try it. I mean, really, because it'd be, it'd be nice, but then extensive landscape, wherever you can put it in the, in the parking area and in front of your building, I mean, I've, you know, whatever requirements there are.
I don't disagree with you on that one, Bob, but the only thing I, I have a concern, the maintenance factor that you might have on 23rd, I think, might be a little different than what you might see with respect...
Than a residential? Yeah.
In a residential area, because they might come tearing up, you're gonna roll a big asphalt machine down 23rd Street sooner or later. I mean, it's, it's gonna happen.
Well, and when...
I, I, I hear you.
And here's a, and here's a... There's a twelve-inch snow with, you know, snow...
Yeah, they'll push it out, you know, so.
Now, some of the other commercial applications there, the Sonic down the street, they have some landscaping, but it is behind the sidewalk as opposed to between the curb and the sidewalk.
What are the planned operating hours of this practice?
I, I open from 9 to around 6 to 7 p.m. because of the patient, the combination to the patient, they like after hours, so we are one of the few clinics that open after hours, so that's the concern is safety, is that we, our staff and our patient do come out after 5 p.m.
How many others? I'm sorry, Jim. Setting the building back from the street concerns me a little bit. I understand the neighbors to the south, but if the building is set back, it's gonna be way back behind the two houses on either side of it. Gets dark at 5:30 or 6 o'clock in the wintertime. This will be pretty dark getting in and out of there if you're...
Sidebar.
A lady, a female patient, and it's 6 or 6:30 when you're finished, it's dark, and nobody from the street can see you.
How many employees will, will be at the...
We would like to employ more, but where I'm at right now is I can't do anymore. Currently, we have five staff right now, part-time.
So you're gonna have five full-time and then some...
Well, we have one full-time and the rest, because of limited parking space, I can only, you know, hire part-time staff.
And they probably would, you, you would probably want them to park along the back anyway, so that wouldn't be cars really coming in and going that often, would it?
Well, I think based on this, we are going parking on the side, because we have little parking space. We're trying to get parking mostly to the front and some for the side, for us, for staff.
Okay, so it's different than the site plan than we've got in our...
No, it's the same, it's the same.
Okay.
It's two of them.
And again, the one that has the parking all in the front, our, our lighting issues
won't be as severe, because we can just light the immediate back of the building as opposed to lighting all of the parking area.
That property immediately to the east has parking in the back without the lighting.
Yes. To the east, there is a commercial... And they have their parking in the rear of, or at least part of it.
Yeah, in fact, they access from Independence. I'd rather have the building in the middle of the lot.
I think that'd be my preference also.
I think we need to continue the theme along the street. That's, that's an important part of, of what we do when we look at streetscapes. I would, I wouldn't be in favor of putting the building to the back.
I think, I think you're kinda right on that, because if it was not an interior lot, if it was a corner, it would have a different impact, but it's, it's not on the corner. It's kinda, it's a house on each ass, and now you're pulling it way back. If it was on that corner, I think it'd be all right if it was pushed back, but...
Yeah, in the middle of the block, I don't like that.
Yeah.
Your, your consideration is the appearance on 23rd. My consideration is the people that live in back of this facility, and I think that that's where I would prefer to be more aware of what it is, the impact of this would be if you have cars parked back there with broken mufflers, with, I don't know.
Keep the fence clear.
You see, huh?
Keep the fence clear.
Yeah? Well, I mean, it was a, it's a debate. Remember, I told you on... Remember, I told you on the phone.
And that's what we presented, too, is we couldn't...
Well, perhaps we should just move it along one way or the other.
With the parking in front and back, the building in the middle seems to be the effective answer. In practice, what will happen is the employees will show up, they'll park in the back.
Stay there.
There won't be any more traffic back there for most of the day, like a lunch or something. The patients will use the front, as they should. And it appears to be a no-brainer to me, and that way you maintain some of that line integrity.
Yep.
The long 23rd Street. Talking about. But plus, you get the balance you want. You don't want everybody in the back. You're pushing too much traffic back there.
I can support the site plan where you got the building in the middle of the lot, with parking in the back and parking in front. I don't think it's going to be that large of an impact, and it keeps in line with what we're trying to accomplish as far as...
Yeah, yes, that's fine.
The one is fine.
I move approval of the application with the building located in the center of the property line with parking in the back and the front with the additional requirement, Jeff, of shaded lighting, whatever you... You know, whatever lighting that would be interfering with the backyard that, I mean...
Now, whatever screening required on the lighting, so we are...
And the fencing.
And fencing as well. If the fencing is currently there, I believe it's six-foot fencing. If it's not adequate, we'll change that, but I believe the six-foot fencing will be adequate.
All right.
There's a number of trees back there.
Yeah.
Six-foot is what is required.
Right. Upon that, I approve it. I made approval of the application.
But you want a TE about standard TE...
About lighting.
Light shading from a commercial or an office, a landscaping.
Lighting, landscaping, yeah.
So JJ knows what to put in there.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 16 with the building in the center of the property and adding a TE regarding lighting. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Item 17 is ABC 731, an application by Thomas Chad Stalkup for an ABC two overlaying I-1 Light Industrial at 2823 South Agnew, Ward Six.
Yes. Good afternoon, commission. My name is Thomas Chad Stalkup, 14500 Brasswood Boulevard in Edmond, Oklahoma. I'm the current owner of 2823 South Agnew, Ward Six. My current tenants, in December, upon applying for a liquor license, it was discovered that the ABC overlay was expired, and I was not aware at the time that I had to keep that going, so that's why I'm here for the ABC two.
Did the use lapse? How did it expire?
From what I understand, it expired before I took ownership of the building.
They were out of business for more than six months?
Yes, sir.
Do you understand that this requires you to have 50% food service?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And where's the kitchen? The new kitchen located in the building? Is that upstairs?
Actually, it was already there. The kitchen was already there.
Is it upstairs?
Yes, sir. It is.
So this was revealed to us all by the vice enforcement, the police and the fire marshal's office. That's how we figured this out? According to our staff report, it says that an investigation by the Oklahoma City Vice Enforcement and the Fire Marshal's Office found that they were operating without a beer and mixed beverages license. How long that operation been ongoing, do you know?
It hadn't. That was the first night. It was my understanding that...
Oh.
Yeah, that was the first night. They had required a catering license that night while they were getting their liquor license, and the fire marshal was there upon a, I believe, a infraction with one of the doors in the back.
Oh.
They were alerted the day they tried to start.
Yeah. All right. So you didn't get too far down the road with it?
Not yet.
All right. I get it. All right, let's go to you.
Is your kitchen big enough, I mean, to... I mean, you're... This has really been operated historically, apparently, as a club with, if anything, very limited food service.
Actually, it was the, if you recall, it was the Hog House. They had a Harley-Davidson dealership downstairs, and it was a restaurant bar upstairs. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what it was. I think it was a club several, several years ago, but I bought it from the current Hog House owner.
You did?
It's not bad. They, historically, they had a full-service menu, full restaurant up there.
Oh, okay. That was upstairs.
That's upstairs. Downstairs was the Harley dealership.
And you're going to operate the entire building now as a restaurant and...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. With some square feet for storage. They're not going to...
Well, no one's signed up, commissioners, so it's your pleasure. I'll move approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 17. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you, commission.
Item 18 is CE 800, an application by OKC Town Center LLC to close a portion of platted East-West alleys in Block 20 and 31 in Maywood Edition, a portion of Northeast 7th and Northeast 8th Street between North Walnut and North Oklahoma.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Dennis Box, 522 Colquitt Drive, here to answer any questions if you have any. This has gone to the review process with the downtown design review, and they recommend it approved. No one signed up, commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve item 18. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 19 is a de-annexation request. It's a public hearing of ordinance regarding de-annexation of roadway and right-of-way along two and a half miles of Northwest 10th Street in Ward Three and one mile of Mustang Road in Ward One. And Ken Bryan is here to talk to that.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Ken Bryan. I'm a planner with the City of Oklahoma City Planning Department. I'm going to put that in slideshow mode. Thanks. The little bit of background on this project, and the slides come up here, and it shows the City of Yukon. You can see in blue there where the... We have a shared boundary between Yukon and the City of Oklahoma City. It's about 19 miles in total. A lot of that boundary occurs down the centerline of roadways. As we know, it's... We've been working slowly with our neighbors to move jurisdictional boundaries from centerlines of roadways to one side or other of the right-of-way, putting the roadway and its right-of-way fully inside one jurisdiction or another. So we're beginning that process with the City of Yukon. The City of Yukon desired to start that process here along Northwest 10th Street, which is the far southern boundary of their city, and the one-mile section of Mustang Road that serves as our boundary. Looking a little more closely at that area, you can see that three and a half miles of our boundary are included in this action. We are proposing to de-annex to the near side of Northwest 10th Street and the near side, our Oklahoma City side of Mustang Road. That is an area of approximately 25 acres. Oklahoma City has a water line on the... In the southern south of Northwest 10th Street, in an area that, if both of these actions are approved, would then be inside the City of Yukon. We've entered into an agreement, it's to protect the City of Oklahoma City's interests and allow access to that line, and should it need to be relocated, either by the City of Yukon's request or another utility, that that wouldn't be... That Oklahoma... That would be done at their cost, not Oklahoma City's cost. The status of that agreement is Yukon has executed that agreement. Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust has executed that agreement. Council will authorize that agreement in conjunction with the de-annexation ordinance, and the mayor will execute it at that point. As an additional point of clarification, Yukon has provided written confirmation that they'll take over the maintenance responsibilities for the roadway and the several traffic signals that fall along both of these corridors. Just a quick overview of the approval process. We took this action to the Annexation/De-Annexation Committee of the City Council. On May 4, they directed staff to continue with the de-annexation, which we did. We introduced a planning commission two weeks ago. Today's the planning commission hearing. City Council introduction will be February 8, and with a final hearing scheduled for March 1. And between the City of Oklahoma City and the City of Yukon, we've agreed to an effective date of April 16, 11:59 p.m. for the de-annexation, April 17, midnight for the annexation. That concludes the formal portion of this presentation. Staff has found that the... This action complies with the policies in the comprehensive plan regarding the resolving shared jurisdictions. Representatives from the City of Yukon are here, as well as I, so we can answer any questions you may have about that.
Can't imagine anybody has any questions.
I have a comment. Anytime that I can vote in favor of de-annexation of a city with 630 square miles, even though it's only 25 acres, I vote in favor of that move approval.
I would second that, and by saying that, it also sure beats trying to rename streets yourself.
I actually did have a question. Are we gifting them these traffic signals?
I guess that's one way to put it. I mean, there are traffic signals, and we installed them. They're not buying them, although they will be responsible for the future maintenance of those signals, and we would hope that in working with them in the future, we will... I mean, it's a shared responsibility. There may be some roadway that we have to take over responsibility for as well, so there's a, you know, everyone wants to come out even on the whole deal after the entire process is approved.
So to be clear, we're de-annexing roadway and right-of-way for two and a half miles of Northwest 10th Street and one mile of Mustang Road, and we have a motion and a second. So cast your votes, and it is done. You have your 25 acres.
It's all paved. Item 20 is a public hearing and resolution approving the FY 2011-2015 Capital Improvement Plan for the city, and I see Craig and Michael are here to talk about that if we have any last-minute questions.
Commissioners, any questions about the CIP plan at this point? Well, this is just a resolution approving.
I would just like to compliment the staff on all the work they've done on this. It was so very helpful to have them explain to us what this process really is, and I think, you know, that we've all kind of realized that it needs to be a little more inclusive as we go along, and we've realized that we have a little more responsibility than we thought we had, and so it's been very, very helpful to have the staff kind of walk us through this, and I really appreciate it.
We're on 20, aren't we?
Yes.
On the public works, streets on the back page, can somebody explain what that widening Well, 59th, 44th, 59th, and 74th, all the way down to 89th Street, and it says, "Street widening." Want to think about that?
I didn't bring my book with me because I thought we kind of... I was passionate earlier. Craig, can you help us?
Well, if anybody knows anything about it or not, but I know Choctaw Road. Maybe that means Choctaw Road from 89th to 44th.
Yeah, I'm not specifically familiar with the projects, but I would assume that's what that means.
Okay.
That's kind of what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Well, we have a motion. Nick made a motion.
Oh, second?
Good. Now we have a motion and a second. It's a resolution approving the 2011 to 2015 CIP plan. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you, and I do appreciate the time and effort to deal with me on the questions. We go back to number 10 and the applicant for SPOD 596. Okay. The motion to continue item 10 to February 10, I think. Cast your votes, and we've continued item 10. And planning commission committees, any... Planning commission members. Planning department.
Just a reminder again that the joint workshop between the Planning Commission and the City Council is on February the 15th at the Cox Center.
Is there a draft of proposed topics yet that we could all receive?
I anticipate that has to go out here very shortly. I'll have to go into SIa, but the three topics that I mentioned this last time will be an update on Plan OKC and where we are with it and what its intent is, and that's also going to relate to the second topic, which is on fiscal sustainability of our current growth patterns. And the third item is a discussion on establishment of policy and who does that between Planning Commission and City Council.
Apparently, you guys have been too aggressive. Development Services, JJ? Municipal Counselor, Susan? Any other business? Motion to adjourn? And we're adjourned.